We'll call the city council meeting to order Tuesday, November 18th at 6:00 PM. And if you please rise for the pledge. Thank you.
Please to flag the United States of America, the two republics which are stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Oh, change classes. All right. Item one, public comments and announcements. At this time, we would like to listen to any member of the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of four minutes per speaker. Shall be limited to city business or city-related business or matters of general public interest. That shall not include any personal attacks or abusive language. All public remarks shall be addressed to the chair. Comments should not be directed toward individual council members, city staff, or other members of the public. In accordance with the Text Open Meetings Act, members may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. When your name is called, please come to the podium and state your name and address clearly into the microphone before making your comments. Thank you. And check to see that it's on, please. We have three names. Thank you, Rachel. Yeah, thank you, Sean. Okay, Jackie Rascoe.
I think we're on. Good evening. My name is Jackie Rascoe, 4002 Lake Point Forest. I am here tonight because I am deeply concerned about the recent records purging and the direction our city is taking when it comes to records request, record retention, and transparency, specifically regarding items 7.1 and 8.1 on tonight's agenda. Tonight, you are considering doing the bare minimum required by state law. And while that may be technically meet compliance, it absolutely does not meet the expectations of an engaged, informed, and trusting community. While you say you are trying to reduce staff hours by limiting the amount of public records one can request annually, you are simultaneously deleting public records, forcing a person to submit a formal request, all while increasing staff hours. You're also increasing staff hours with the action of deleting records. What sense does any of this make? As you can see on item 3.1, our minutes do not include the agenda attachments. They do not include the supporting documents, presentations, reports, exhibits that council uses to make the decisions. Those attachments are where a huge amount of the real information lives, budget details, zoning maps, engineering reports, environmental data, contracts, and everything else that the public has a right to understand. When those materials are not preserved with the minutes, the historical record becomes incomplete. Future residents, researchers, journalists, and even staff will have minutes that make reference to items whose substance is completely vanished. It becomes impossible to reconstruct what information council actually saw, what alternatives were presented, and what data influenced the decisions made on behalf of all of us. So keeping only the recorded minutes is useless. It also raises the question, why is the city choosing to keep less information rather than more? Many cities, and I've looked, there's many, many cities, maintain full agenda packets as part of their permanent record precisely because transparency is not a burden, it is a cornerstone of trust. It shows that a city has nothing to hide, that it respects its citizens, and it values public oversight as part of good governance. Seabrook should want to be in that group. I urge the city not to approve item 7.1, but do discuss item 8.1 and adopt a stronger retention policy. Keep the full agenda packets, attachments and all. Keep the video recordings as permanent records alongside the minutes, not because the state forces us to, but because accountability, openness, and public trust deserve more than the minimum. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joe McCall.
Joe McCall, okay. A good job on the Veterans Day event that was this last Tuesday. Very good. It was a week ago today, so good job on that. Then, good job on cleaning the fire station. The fire station looks really good now. I wish they would have been done sooner, but at least it's done, so that's a good thing. And then, kudos to whoever painted the Carruthers Garage Building. If you haven't been out there, you need to go look at it. It's got a complete mural out there. It's got a bunch of flowers and butterflies and things like that. Just makes that building look a lot better, so that looks really, really good. Okay, a few other things. The multi-printed water bills. So, I've lived at this house for almost a year now, and I've gotten five times, I've gotten a dual water bill on a postcard. You get two of them. So, you know, they just said, hey, we sent two, but why? Because if that cost, there's a cost of printing it, stamps or whatever, there's no stamp on it, I'm sure you have a rate, but there's no reason to be sending two. And by the way, I had a bunch of people call me and ask me, do I owe this twice or do I owe it once? So that just creates confusion. The land at Nassarode One, I've spoken about this before, Nassarode One at Rep Store where the boat trailers are. Now the sign that has the, who was selling it and, you know, for sale or whatever, that's gone. But it looks terrible. I mean, so we finally got that place right where you come into Seabrook and El Lago. That looks a lot better. It's still not great, but it looks way better. But this has got a dilapidated fence, you know, bushes growing all over the fence, halfway leaning down, and then a bunch of cruddy boat trailers in there. So, just doesn't look good, needs to be cleaned. And then, oh, the check valves at the, at this new bathroom thing you're looking at. Again, I've looked at this, I've talked to a bunch of cities. There'll be no city in this whole area or anywhere on the Gulf Coast that builds a bathroom 18 feet above sea level. There's check valves, Y-valve, non-return valves, they're called Joker valves. You could even talk to Guy Rogers because he built one over at his place, and he knows what to do, so, and he's on your planning and commissions board or whatever, so he could tell you. There's a lot of people that could tell you that these will work. And if not, if you don't go that route, the trailer thing would be just fine because they look really nice. But you're gonna have to have a bathroom if you're gonna have parks, so you have to have bathrooms, and that's a solution. And we're not the only city, they built them in Galveston. If Galveston can build them, and they build on-ground bathrooms, then Seabrook could do it too. And I've heard this, FEMA will raise your insurance rates. No, they won't. And FEMA probably won't be around anyway by the time the bathroom's done, because that's probably gonna end up going. And I guess my last thing on the fire station is, again, looks great, and I'm happy about that. But again, I'm a why guy, like, why did that happen? Why did it get to that? Why wasn't it kept up for all those years? And I think that needs to be discussed. And till it does, you know, you know, that's gonna be an issue that just keeps coming back, because if it happened there, it could happen at other places too. Thanks.
Sorry, thank you. And Kelly Stewart.
The last person.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. I'm Kelly Stewart. Tonight, you're being asked to take the final step in passing an ordinance that will fundamentally change the relationship between the city and its citizens. This isn't a small procedural tweak. This is a shift in power, away from the people and into the hands of City Hall. The ordinance you're voting on gives the city the ability to decide when a resident has asked too many questions, when a request becomes excessive, and when the city can start charging upfront, delaying responses, or denying them outright. And the public needs to understand something very clearly. The city gets to decide how many hours your request supposedly took. There is no independent verification, no oversight, no appeal before the damage is done. I want to give you a real example from my own experience. When I filed a public information request to understand how an agenda item regarding the hot committee even made it onto the agenda, a simple request involving roughly eight emails. The city claimed it required 90 staff hours and over $1,000 in fees. 90 hours for about eight emails. I had to fight it for over a month. It went all the way to the Texas Attorney General. And you know what happened? The AG ruled in my favor. Suddenly, that $1,000 bill became $36 because the city admitted they'd used the wrong date range. If this ordinance had been in place then, they could have said I hit that 36-hour limit. They could have demanded full payment upfront. They could have refused the process, refused to process anything else I filed, all because of their own mistake. That should concern every single resident in this city. Transparency is not a convenience, an inconvenience. It is not a burden. It is not a privilege reserved for the few. Transparency is the foundation of trust, and trust does not grow in the dark. If the city believes efficiency is the goal, then the solution is simple. Publish more records. Make information easier to access. Don't punish people for trying to understand how their own government works. Passing this ordinance sends a message that asking questions makes you a problem and that problems get shut down. I urge you, do not pass this tonight. Do not silence the citizens you serve. Do not create a system where the government gets to decide when the public has seen enough. Open government is the only government that earns the public's trust. Tonight, you have a choice. Move forward with transparency or move away from it. The people of Seabrook are watching, and we're paying attention. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that was the last on the list, yes. Item 1.1, mayor, city council, and/or members of the city staff may make announcements about city or community events. Tyler, is that you?
That's me. All right, upcoming announcements on Thanksgiving Day. Our city offices will be closed all day, Thursday, November 27th and 28th. On Thursday, December 4th, we have our tree lighting at the community house behind us here from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. It'll bring holiday music, festive treats, local vendors, a special visit from Santa Claus to kick off the season in magical style. You want more information on that event, that'll be on our website, seabritexas.gov/trelighting. Last event here, we have Breakfast with Santa, which is on Saturday, December 13th, from 9:00 in the morning to 11:00 in the morning, same place, at the community house. And if you want more information on that, you can look up at seabritexas.gov/santa.
Thank you. Anything else, anybody have anything? Thank you. Item 1.2, city manager update and report to city council on various items that require no action, including Seabrook boards and commissions, transportation projects, and city of Seabrook CIP projects.
Mayor and council, your boards and commissions, a couple met since your last regular council meeting. Parks and Trails Committee will hear here in just a moment from the Parks Committee on the Carruthers project, but they have that on their last agenda, as well as discussion on the beach area at Carruthers. The Ethics Review Commission met on November the 10th for new member introductions and training, to set training that will be happening in early 2026. And most everybody was present. We had a joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission on the 13th, and where that item that was discussed on the temporary restrooms. And lastly, the Board of Adjustment met Monday this week and discussed the status of the waterfront property that's been demolished and the lasting foundation that will also be removed for that property. The other case is a residential case off of Baywood, and we will have that demolished, or the new owner will have that demolished through the bank. On transportation projects, the 146 project that is from Red Bluff to Spencer, Tech Stop Project, that's been moving a little bit slow, as you can see in the Seabrook intersection there, they've had the rebar deliveries and plan to start back up on third lanes and then do some additional traffic shifts in our specific city limits, not just over towards the shore acres and La Porte area. So, I don't have a specific date on when they're planning on doing that. They're still prioritizing getting the entrance ramp prepped up just past the Shell Station there to hopefully be able to open that up by January, February of 2026. Southern Access Road, this is another project that the Port of Houston is working in conjunction with Harris County. This will be the second ingress egress to the Bayport complex. And Port of Houston is targeting quarter number one at this point to have complete design and be ready to move out for the bidding process. The Port Rail Spur, another port project with the federal shutdown. I've been reporting that the quiet zone application, the final application that the city has to, being named to party on, is hung up in kind of a holding pattern. Now with the government open, we're just kind of waiting on a new status to figure out where we're at in the queue. I did put a little bit of an issue on this one. I noticed the other day, I haven't had that many reports, but appears that their second crossing arm on the northbound there by the Shell Stations reacting or engaging. And so I have put in a ticket for them to explore what the options are there, because it seems like there's, it seems to be activating for no apparent reason. So, if you have any concerns on that, there is a ticket, they were looking at that already. EMS Station, this is one of our bond projects. The site is completely on the groundwork, prepped out with the utilities. They've got an electrical run on the right side of the building, so we'll have new electrical set. Rebar's been delivered, they're forming for the foundation, and we're planning to have that poured before the end of the year. Target completion on this project is still targeting around April of 2026. The municipal pool, bond project as well, a design is complete, the demolition is complete, and they're forming up to the new set of designs, and we're targeting August 2026. So, we're not gonna quite make that Memorial Day as we expected, but the project is moving along. On the water projects, Seascape Waterline Project is substantially complete, so crews will be cleaning up and moving out, so that project will be done. And that kind of concludes the highlights. Any questions?
Got a question. Okay, I'll have a couple of questions, or mostly one question. On 146 North Island, where it goes from two lanes to one lane, there seem to be a lot more accidents lately at that, at that, at that part of the roadway. Is there anything Tech Dot or anyone can do to maybe put a little bit better signage up? I mean, not that people will read it and follow it, but at least it's something that we can at least address it with them, that we have seen an uptick in accidents at that particular spot.
Yes. Councilor Savantes had reached out, and I have had several calls to our office, and I think Brian to Public Works as well. I've been in communication with one of the Tech Stop reps that's in charge of that, making those requests at this point. They believe that they have proper signage, so can continue to communicate that to that agency, but at this point, they're not making any changes.
Buddy had a question.
Yeah, have we had any input from Precinct 2 regarding Red Bluff? The shoulders there are caving in in several places. I mean, it's, can be an adventure driving it.
Oh, on the S-turn and past, on that side, S-turn area?
No, I'm talking about Red Bluff from, you can tell from Meyer going north, as you go head north, those shoulders are caving.
Oh, are you talking about Toddville?
Huh?
Toddville? Toddville or Red Bluff?
It's on Toddville, going towards Red Bluff.
Okay.
If you're going from Meyer towards Red Bluff.
Okay.
But it's, well, even in fact, north of Red Bluff, it's caved in too. Are they planning any kind of maintenance or anything on it?
So, Brian's been in contact, and we have a number of transportation plans that we've communicated. Red Bluff is in need of help. Toddville is what we're getting the most reports on right now. There's significant dips. Looks like the base is disintegrated in a lot of areas, and you're jarred. So, we are setting up a meeting with the Harris County to talk to them about the conditions of Toddville. I will note, several months ago, we reported that the county had started a study on Toddville. We have just received information on that Toddville study. It was very reduced. The scope and the location of what they were looking at was much shorter, the span of Toddville, which does not include the areas, I think, that we're getting most of the complaints. So, the meeting that we're setting up with them is to figure out what is their plan, because that road is disintegrating at a pretty rapid pace.
Yeah, okay.
Angela.
Yeah, same question. I know you're probably tired of me asking it, but just, do you have any update on that decommission track?
Every time we talk, I send that email, and I don't have an answer, but I will send another email and try to find out.
Okay, thank you. And then I wanted to thank the chief. There's been a lot of traffic issues at Bay Elementary, gotten quite a few correspondents, and the chief sent out officers to go sit out there and monitor that traffic flow, so it seems to be doing a lot better. So, thank you.
I've seen officers for some of the problematic school bus pickup areas too, so thank you. Seems you're making a difference. Anyone else?
Mayor, I have another question. On Toddville, right before waterfront, where the fishing bridges, I remember at one, at one point in time, we had signs up, or the city had signs up about, like, no fishing from the bridge. And we're, and just like, like over the weekend, like, just when, you know, I was going down there, and unfortunately, like, you know, people like to just run out right in front, and some of them are also, you know, children, like, under the age of 10. Is there anything that we can do? I know it's a county road, but then also, like I said, at one point, we had, like, no fishing from the bridge signs, and then I noticed that there, and then also under, under the new overpass over there on the northbound side, people are starting to collect over that area too. And unfortunately, it's only gonna be a matter of time before someone's not paying any attention, and we end up having a pretty catastrophic auto pedestrian accident there. I just didn't know if there was anything that PD could do, or we could do, or if we had to get with Harris County on that, or how that would work.
We probably need to get with Harris County. The think the signs that you were talking about, at one point, we, the city, spray painted no fishing on the bridge to try to alleviate that. It is a county, so we'll probably need to work a little bit with the county to see what we can do. We had talked, I believe, with Texas Parks and our, the game warden at one point to see if he could assist. I think that's where the county had directed us. So, let me work on that. It's been some time. The second response in, around the 10th Street area, where we've got orange barrels, I am working with the contractor that finished the aesthetics. We've finally exchanged the vendor that got the bollards, so I am looking at bollard costs to finish off that curve so that we can chain that off, so that will not continue to be a parking area in that, in that section. So, we're working on that as well.
Awesome, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Gail. All right, item two, presentations, item 2.1, presentation of the monthly financial report for October 2025. Mike?
I apologize, I do not have a monthly financial report. I thought this was going on the next meetings. I do apologize.
We will pull item 2.1, move to the next meeting. Item 2.2, presentation for Parks and Trails Committee regarding construction project to Carruthers Coastal Gardens. I'm just gonna make that presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yeah, thank you for the opportunity, once again, to come before you, before representing Parks and Trails here on what we have been working on as of late. This is a video that we actually produced, gosh, it's been almost three years ago at this point, as kind of a promotional video when we had first started on Carruthers. So, Chris Coolman came out and produced this for us, just what we had at the time, the entire four-acre track, kind of, as you notice, started there at the water, going back to where the house is, the casita. And this is kind of an example of what we had proposed at the time, so. Since that time, as you can see, the grassy areas here have been replaced with gravel. I'm happy to report here in just a couple of minutes how far along we've come in that process. If you, if you haven't been out there, it's really looking good.
They just say coming 2002.
They used to say coming 2002. So here's a statistic that, that came to our attention when we first started this project, that more people visited public gardens last year than Disneyland, Disney World, and all North American amusing parts combined. A gentleman named Robert Benfield actually tracks this kind of data and wrote a book, New Directions in Garden Tourism, that keeps track of that. Since COVID, when everybody kind of got locked in and locked down, as you know, all the garden centers, parks, they were still open. So it was a huge boon for the garden business and parks in general. If you'll notice the type of landscaping here, a lot of people have asked what exactly we're going to be planning out there, and I'll get a little more in depth later. It's not the typical kind of thing you see in front of subdivision. The annual plants that have to be exchanged is not what we're doing. It's more perennials like this that will be blooming, you know, throughout the, throughout the season. So we'll talk, this, I don't mean to make this sound like it's going to be long, it's actually pretty short, so, but here's what we're going to discuss. A lot of people don't realize the size of the tract. If you can kind of see in here, I don't know if you can see that mouse at all, that's where the old Carruthers building used to be, here, obviously waterfront down here. This is approximately 1,200 feet from the water back here to the inlet, or to, excuse me, to the, the street that goes through the middle here. Then you've got what we call the West Track that comes down everything to the left side there. That's actually Moss Nursery, so the little, little creek that comes down there. So you're talking a total of about 2,000 linear feet. And then the total acreage, as you can see there, is a little over seven acres. Now, what we're concentrating on right now is just the East Track, which is the section that goes basically from the community garden out to the water. This is an interesting picture I found from Google. For those of you that don't know what used to go on here, the building up here at the top right is the old Carruthers house. And interestingly enough, there's a wedding about to happen. You can see the chairs set up right over here. In fact, that's one of the reasons the city had originally purchased this property, not only as a park, but to use as a wedding venue. You can see all the bridal parties over here at the casita getting ready and obviously the wedding will be starting soon. Before, we had a big giant Public Works building. You can see the area over here to the left where the cars are parked, the parking lot, that is now the community garden. So that's what we started with, for those that don't know. So that was where the Parks Department was actually there in that trailer, and that's where they parked all the tractors and that kind of stuff. This is what the inside of Carruthers looked like when it was set up, I said, as a wedding venue, as rental. A lot of people, I know several of you asked me, that you'd never seen what it looked like inside, so here's what it was. To go back just a little bit, we started, I think in 1999, with Carruthers Coastal Gardens Task Force One. They came before council gave a report, I think before they sat down, we had established Carruthers Coastal Garden Task Force Two. Results of Task Force Two were several, several items that came up. We actually were very successful in putting together a pretty good plan, establishing an outline for the development of the property, established a timeline and a budget and the preparation of the drawings and specifications to go along with that. So I actually will be emailing you guys this. I meant to get that to Gail today and I apologize, it didn't happen, so. But this kind of shows an outline. In fact, you can see some of the dates on here in green. Phase one was 21, 22, phase two, 22, 23, but we've got it going on now, so we're in good shape. So things started out with this drawing that we did about, I guess that was 21, when the nonprofit came in and assisted with a lot of the, the plans and things that we used to, to lay out the park. So started with that, which then became this drawing, which then became this drawing once it got to Norx and we got all the grades shot and everything done and ready. As you guys know, we released that, the work order, I guess it was probably about a month ago, six weeks ago, and happy to say it has all been completed at this point. So if you haven't been out there, here's kind of what's going on right now. This is the beach area, so you can see the trails here that have all been completed. We had a little bit of rain right after they got done, which allowed all the grass to start growing, so they had sprayed hydromulch. So you've got the new access over here to the parking lot from Pine Gully and then these are all, I hate this, it just shows it in one dimension. If you go out there, you'll see that all these areas, excuse me, the berm areas in between the walkways, all have about an 18-inch rise for them, just, or to them, just waiting for the planting that we've got hopefully taking place in the spring. So next steps, water and electrical. So like I said, we finished all the dirt work, the drainage, we had some rain afterward. It looks absolutely great out here. This is what's being proposed right now. The red, as you can see, is our electrical line going out of just a one shot. We're actually just proposing to put the conduit in the ground, get that prepared for future use. And then the blue lines will be the water that you can see goes out to each of the berm areas that allow for at least the first one or two years for those plants to get the, the water they need to get started. This is an interesting design, so this is kind of how it starts out with a planting design like this. And this, I think, took place, I don't remember if that was the university where this was, they had, this is actually kind of cool. So everybody asks, how are we going to plan all this stuff? So as you can see, the planting designer, the garden designer comes through, basically grids it all out. You can see down at the bottom down here, all the plants have been delivered and all set up, everything's color coded. In this particular instance, they had, I think it was over a weekend, they had 150 people that planted 30,000 plants. So that's something that, that we kind of proposed to do too. We've talked to several groups of folks and we think we can get a, a big group of volunteers to come out and take care of that. So once again, you see all the plants are laid out, getting ready for the volunteers to arrive. There's another view from the top. That's after one year. When you plant thick like that, the nice thing is it, it keeps the weeds out and allows you to have a look like that and, and that is after two years. So hopefully, we will have the same fantastic results. So budget, we don't need any money. I think I'm the only one that comes up here that doesn't ask for any money. For those of you that don't know the history, when the house was out there, lost the house in the freeze, the water ran for about three weeks until somebody decided to go out there and take a look. The only good thing was we got 300 and some odd thousand, I forget what it was, for the, for insurance. So to this point, if you look on the first column right here, you can see the 297,000, which is about what we started with after the demolition of the house. So we came through property line, fence and gates, 19,000, removed some dead trees, 11.8, survey, $4,000, engineering, 11,000. You're probably saying, why is that so cheap? Well, it's because we did all the work basically for them in advance. So here's the contract that you guys just released a few weeks ago, the dirt work, swales and berms. So that brings us to the next phase over here, water infrastructure, electrical infrastructure. After all these bills are paid, remaining in the bank right now, we've got about, I think, Mike told me, $124,000. As you can see, we've got 32.5 for water infrastructure, electrical infrastructure, 5,500, and then this will probably be in the spring, bed material, garden design consultants, trees, plants, mulch, et cetera, et cetera. I've got a $12,000 contingency in there, totals up to 127.5. So Buddy has agreed to come up with the $3,500 shortfall. I want to thank him upfront for that. No problem. Yeah, okay. So basically, all we are, are asking is just, since this whole plan has already been accepted by council, so we're just asking permission to go ahead with our next steps for council to approve more, moving forward with the water irrigation infrastructure, council to approve moving forward with electrical infrastructure, and for council to approve hiring a garden consultant, so we can kind of get started on some of those things. So any questions?
When y'all bid these, these projects, does, do those bids come to council or y'all handle all that?
We actually don't bid it. This is, this is still city driven, so Parks and Trails, we just kind of look at the ideas and think, well, this is what we should do next. We put together the ideas and then we hand it off to the city, so they dot all the i's and cross the t's, so.
So all the water infrastructure and all, all the irrigation, all that is going to be handled by, by city staff?
It'll all have to be bid. From what I understand, since it's under $50,000, it doesn't necessarily have to be an RFP, but they still have to get three bids.
Right, okay, thank you.
Sure. Anybody else?
Anybody else? This is, this is a nice project.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's nice to see you coming together. And do we need, give direction to staff to move forward with the next phase, which is electrical and water?
Well, I was saying, Jesse, we need to meet.
Sure.
Whoops.
Got it. Thank you. All right, the next item is item three, consent agenda. I have one, two, three, four items to read. Item 3.1, approve the minutes of the November 4, 2025 city council meeting. Item 3.2, consider and take all appropriate action on the second reading of ordinance 2025-22. A request for a conditional use permit to establish an open air market at 1208 North Meyer Road as per the Seabrook City Code Appendix A, comprehensive zoning Article Four, special use regulations, Section 4.11, conditional use permit criteria and procedures. Then item 3.3, consider and take all appropriate action on the second reading, we did first readings last time, of ordinance 2025-24, updating the city's Seabrook master fee schedule. And then item 3.4, approval of the quarterly investment report for the fourth quarter fiscal year 2025.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Councilmember Hammond makes a motion to approve. Councilmember Tullett seconds, all in favor? Opposed, none unanimous, thank you. Item four, boards and commissions. Item 4.1, consider and take all appropriate action on the reappointment of Paul Dunphy and Michelle Brown to the Seabrook Economic Development Corporation for a term to expire on January 1st, 2028.
Motion to approve, 4.1.
Second.
Councilmember Sanford makes a motion to approve. Councilmember Hammond seconds motion 4.1. Do we have any discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed, none unanimous, thank you. Item 4.2, consider and take all appropriate action on the appointment of Jeffrey Larson and Terry Soans to the Board of Adjustments Building Standards Commission and the appointment of Adam Holland as an alternate member with terms to expire December 31st, 2027.
Motion to approve, 4.2.
Second.
Councilmember Sanford makes a motion to approve, 4.2. Councilmember Tullett seconds, any discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed, none unanimous, thank you. Congratulations, everyone, and thank you for your service. All right, item five, bid awards. Item 5.1, consider and take all appropriate action to award the Main Street wastewater treatment plant demolition project to JTR Constructors, Inc. for a bid price of $1,166,300 and authorize city manager to execute contract. Brian?
We received two bids on this project. The low bidder is the one we're recommending to go with. If you have any questions, I can answer them. I've actually got some, there's been some conversations through calls to me about the difference in it, and I can actually answer those if, if needed.
Yeah, it seemed to me to be the removal of dirt down to four feet was the, was the hot button, right?
Yep.
So it looked like the low bidder was using the average for dirt removal in general and the high bidder was using an above average account for contaminated dirt, is that kind of what it was?
Yes, and then the actual, whenever, in the bid process, there was an addendum, and within that addendum, we actually clarified that the material, assume the material to be disposed of as hazardous waste. If they didn't do that, that's, that's on that low bid contractor. So even if it comes back with the hazardous waste materials, they're going to still be held to that $35 a cubic yard. Can't change that.
And then post removal, there'll be a, a study done to determine, yeah.
So when the structures, the structures will come down and before they can do any of the actual dirt work, there's going to be lab samples, taken at these locations to determine where the material needs to go. All these red Xs are where the samples have to be taken before they can determine, before they actually haul out the dirt. It's under every structure where samples have to be taken to determine the chemical and elemental, elemental content of the dirt.
To kind of determine where it gets disposed of.
Yep.
Tom, did you have a question?
Can you bring up the bid again?
The bid tab?
Yeah. I was just concerned about some of these numbers that were so different. Can we get some, a little bit of explanation, particularly the ones that are really different in the two bids?
The big one, the big one is going to be the excavation of all. So that one?
Yeah.
So bidder number two, I guess they assumed the, whatever they assumed after reading the addendum, that's how much they charged for removing the material without knowing what it actually is yet.
So does that mean it's in the other, they have it in another place? Because the other company had to bid it as well?
They bid $35 a cubic yard. Yeah, it seems like they both had the answer. Discrepancy.
Okay. Also, line six as well?
Line six? That's not too bad. Lump sum for utility disconnection removal, there's only, that's not a, not a very big difference in my opinion, but there is one.
All right, thank you.
Chair, did you have a question?
Yeah, just confirming, so you were talking about the, the low bid of the 35 compared to the 4364, and you were saying, you know, a lot of that is the potential of there being hazard, hazard out there? And if they chose to not do their proper homework and it's, it's going to be like stuck on them, right?
Yes, yep.
And this bid was the preferred bid by our engineering firm that we hired to, to bid out this project and.
We have a letter of recommendation from our contract engineer.
Move to approve, 4.1.
Second.
I have a motion, Councilman Hammond to approve. Councilman Tullett second, and if no further discussion, all in favor? Opposed, none unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Item six, new business. 6.1, consider and take all appropriate action on approval of a proposal from Kinley Horn and Associates, Inc. for Bayside Park expansion final design and construction drawings to proceed to the Seabrook Economic Development Corporation, SEDC, for funding consideration.
Mayor, Council, I do have Christina Malik with Kinley Horn in the audience available for questions, but I wanted to preface, this item's being brought to you a little bit different order. So we have phase one of the Bayside Park to get us to conceptual design, and that was taken to EDC, came back to council, and there were some questions. So what I'm doing tonight is bringing you the proposal for the second and final phase to get us through Bayside Park, construction drawings and ready for bid. And want to make sure that you're supportive of the scope of work. If you have any questions, this is your opportunity to ask any questions. And then the action tonight that I'm being, asking council to consider is for us to go ahead and move forward to city, or to Seabrook EDC. We have some additional old Seabrook funds available and we'd like to approach EDC for this project in the Old Seabrook District project. So I'll open the floor up. Christina, since you've been so kind to come out, if you'll come on up to the podium and then if council has any specific questions on the scope.
Is this project going to be a, a design bid build package like the, the pool was, or all separately?
This will need to go to public bid in terms of, we'll prepare construction documents and then that will be open to the public to, to bid on. So similar to the wastewater treatment plant, where you'll have multiple bids to be able to compare.
And this, sorry. This bid that we're talking about now is going to go back to EDC and EDC has committed funds for, more funds than what this bid is for. Is that, and this is a not to exceed?
Correct. We have in EDC, anytime you have over $10,000, there's a project. So I think we're going on, probably 10 years ago, EDC did a project notice for what we called the Old Seabrook District project. It encompasses this area. So. So in their project line item for fiscal year '26, $500,000 has been budgeted towards that project. So if, again, this will be up for EDC to consider, but it would be an eligible cost within that line item.
Anybody else?
Move to approve, 6.1.
Second.
Councilman Hammond makes a motion to approve 6.1. Councilmember Tolet seconds. All in favor? Opposed? None? Unanimous? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Looking forward to working with you guys.
Thank you. All right. Item 6.2, consider and take all appropriate action on the annual groundwater well inspection services agreement with Alsea Incorporated and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Move to approve, 6.2.
Second.
Councilmember Hammond makes a motion to approve 6.2. Councilmember Tolet seconds. Is there any questions or discussion? Any questions for Brian? Hearing none? All in favor? Opposed? None? Unanimous? Thank you, sir. Item 6.3, consider and take all appropriate action on the inter-local agreement between Harris County by and through its Housing and Community Development Department, HCHCD, and the city of Seabrook for a community development block grant mitigation, CDBG MIT, planning studies in the amount of $250,000 for the purpose of conducting the city's Seabrook zoning ordinance rewrite update project to address flood risk, enhance infrastructure resilience, and support long-term disaster mitigation efforts, and authorize mayor to execute the agreement. No money? Free?
I'm here to answer any questions you all may have.
This is, the grant is for the whole project?
Yes, this is the grant that we've been discussing for CDBG MIT. It'll give us funding to hire a consultant to help us rewrite our zoning ordinance.
Make a motion to approve, 6.3.
Second.
Councilmember Tolet makes a motion. We'll give that to Councilmember... Any discussion or other questions? Hearing none? All in favor? Opposed? None? Unanimous? Thank you, sir. Item 6.4, consider and take all appropriate action on ratification of a business development incentive agreement by Crown Trophy Number 109 as approved by the Seabrook Economic Development Corporation, SCDC, on October 22nd, 2025, in accordance with the previously posted Business Incentive Program Project Resolution for Commercial facade Improvement Incentive at 2168 Bayport Boulevard in an amount not to exceed $7,799.42.
Move to approve, 6.4.
Second.
Councilmember Hammond makes a motion to approve 6.4. Councilmember Tolet seconds. Is there any, are there any questions for Rick or does anybody have any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Opposed? None? Unanimous? Thank you. Item 6.5, consider and take all appropriate action on the approval of Resolution 2025-27, Correction of the Authorizing Official for the Houston UASI Grant Application.
Move to approve, 6.5.
Second.
Councilmember Hammond makes a motion to approve 6.5. Councilmember Sanford second. Questions for Gail or any? Nope. Hearing none? All in favor? Opposed? None? Unanimous? Thank you. Item 6.6, consider and take all appropriate action on the first and final reading of ordinance 2025-25, authorizing and ordering the issuance of general obligation bond series 2025. This is the swimming pool bond, is that? Yep.
Mayor and council, John Rubek, BK Financial Securities. Before we get started, Marcus Dietz, your bond counsel's here. He's the one that you drafted the ordinance, we're asking you to approve tonight, but I do have a good news report. We went to the market today and took sealed competitive bids and received six bids from banks who are willing to buy your bonds for lower than the going rate you'll see on page one of the current market review. Very, very happy with the results. On page one is the current market review. This is bond buyer index, weekly average of municipal bonds across the country. You'll see on the far right there in the blue, the current general obligation rate's at 4.75%. We sold general obligation bonds, tax-backed bonds, so that's the rate that is the going rate for across the country. Again, with your rating of AA, we were able to just get some interest from banks to buy your bonds, and as a result, we got a lower rate than the 4.75. On page two is a summary of the bids that we did receive. We, like I said, we received six bids this morning at 10 o'clock. The lowest bid was from Robert W. Baird &amp; Co. of 3.913%. That's a net interest cost bid. The yield you're actually paying will be a little higher because of issuance costs. This is the bid they're willing to pay you. And so we took the comparison on those six bids, it took the lowest one, and if you approve this bond issue, we'll award the bonds to them to buy them. And the final sources uses on page three. We sold $3,965,000 in bonds to generate $4 million in bonds proceeds. Again, the principal amount's $3,965,000. They were only paying us a premium of $169,000, less the cost of issuance, gets to the total proceeds of $4 million. And the all-cost interest rate was a 4.063%, so again, well below the 4.75 rate we saw across the country. Average life is 15.31 years for 25-year debt. We sold them today, and we are going to close on December 16th, at which point you'll receive your funds for the pool project. The following page is the final debts requirements. On the far left is your current total debts requirements for all your debt outstanding. And then we pay part of that debt with the water sewer system and also the EDC is there in the middle column. And then the next three columns are the general obligation series 2025 bonds. Yeah, we, like I said, we sold 25-year debt, $3,965,000 in bonds, and then far right is your total tax-supported debt. That's the debts paid for by your ad ver lorem property taxes. And then the last page is the scheduled events. We've hit every date on here. The last two dates are the ones we have left. November 18th, we're asking you to approve the sale of the bonds tonight. If you do so, then we'll close on December 16th, at which point you'll receive your funds. Happy to answer your questions you have on the financing. Like I said, I was very pleased with the results of the bids. And again, if you have any questions on the ordinance we're asking you to approve, Mr. Dietz is here to answer those.
Anyone?
Move to approve, 6.6.
Councilmember Hammond makes a motion to approve 6.6 for the bonds. Councilmember Tolet makes a second. If no further discussion or questions, all in favor? Opposed? None? Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Item seven, old business. Is that where we're at? Yeah. Item seven, old business. 7.1, consider and take all appropriate action on the second reading of ordinance 2025-23, adopting the optional Texas Public Information Act rules enshrined in Section 552.275 of the Texas Local Government Code and ordinance of the city of Seabrook, Texas, establishing public information policy to manage excessive repetitive or burdensome requests for public information and designating a public information coordinator pursuant to the Texas Public Information Act, providing for an effective date and providing for severability.
Move to approve, 7.1.
Second.
Councilmember Hammond makes a motion to approve 7.1. Councilmember Tolet seconds. Do we have any discussion?
I assume this is going to be approved, but we're making a big mistake here.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Oh, I just said that I assume this is going to be approved, but I believe we're making a big mistake here.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hearing nothing? All in favor? Opposed? One opposed. Councilmember Cervantes, motion carries. Thank you. Item eight for discussion. Item 8.1, review and discuss the city's current retention schedule that identifies and describes city records and the length of time that each type of record must be retained. The city secretary's office has a presentation about this item.
Hello, mayor and council. I'm going to present from over here so that I can work the computer, so. Gail, do you mind switching over? Takes just a couple minutes. All right. So I wanted to start off by presenting this as a little bit of an education. We've received questions from some of you regarding how, why, purge, who's responsible, who has the authority, why is this happening, and these kinds of things. So I kind of want to go ahead and go through, you know, the basics on this before we get into any more specifics. So, um, so basically, this lives in both local and state statutes. So our city codes establish what we follow for record retention. It's not something I come up with or anyone else. It actually lives in our city codes. Now, our city codes point to the local government code. Specifically, chapters 201 through 205 is what we need to be looking at. That's, most cities do this. But that's who governs records management. And state code establishes that the state, Texas State Library and Archives Commission, those are the retention schedules we use, and that's what we refer to when we say TSLAC. It's, that's the agency, okay? So just kind of giving you a little bit of this so that, you know, the terms, they're going to come up throughout this. So why purge? Why do cities even purge records? Well, it protects the city, and it, basically, it reduces data management costs. It preserves only the true historical and permanent records forever. But there are different levels of keeping these records, and they are laid out in the TSLAC codes, okay? So, and it also helps speed up searches and workflows because you're not keeping things that you shouldn't be keeping. It helps us get through those records that we need to get through when requested. So retention schedules are meant to protect all those things that matter to all local governments or all governments, really. But we are looking at the local government codes for ours. So permanent records are always kept. The TSLAC schedules are, they're designed by experts to preserve these key documents, and the way it's laid out is our routine or lower-valued records are safely destroyed. So we, we have to follow specific guidelines on these things. So it is a transparent process because nothing's destroyed without documentation. So the city secretary's office has to approve all destruction of documents proposed by these department heads. And again, those are based on those TSLAC schedules. So the legal authority given for this, or your records manager, is set out by code, and that is the city secretary. That is me. So my role is officially designated under the Seabrook City Codes, under Chapter 2, Article 7 is where you'll find that. I'm responsible for implementing the city's records management program, and that is also laid out in our codes and those guidelines. So we follow the approved TSLAC retention schedule. We ensure compliance with the Texas Local Government Code. Again, those same chapters, 201 and 205. So that's basically kind of a little answer to who, what, where, why kind of thing, where this stuff even comes from. So now, to kind of give you guys a visual of what questions have come up. So the questions regarding agenda specifically have come up, and that is, I kind of want to give you a visual of what, what people are talking about, what we had, what we now have, and, and that way you could kind of see what we're dealing with. So in our archived agendas, you can see when, before we established our agenda software, we stored this stuff and built this stuff just on our website. And so that's our Civic Plus. So you can see that the way these things were stored for the public's view is in these agenda files. So you can see here, the minutes are within those agenda files. And at that time, the only thing outward-facing to our public was for our permanent records, which are our minutes, were in these agenda files. And so that's why we kind of held on to those. We, we didn't want to just take everything off, and then the public didn't have those permanent records to see. So I'll kind of give you a visual, too, of maybe other cities. I know people are always comparing and looking at other cities, so let me give you that visual as well. So some of the bigger cities use a different agenda software. It's Granicus, and it looks similar. You can kind of see an example here. But again, they're laid out in that way where their agendas and their minutes are kind of stored within that agenda file, okay? So it, it kind of depends on the city, how they store things, how they put things out to their public. Everyone's a little bit different. So when we came and we implemented this new agenda software, you all know that it looks totally different than those pages do what we had before. Also, maybe what you see in other cities, it's just totally displayed different. So when we implemented that, the public input on that was, well, what we don't like about this is that our, sorry, I'm short, is that our minutes aren't viewable in the same way. It's harder to find them. So we set out to offer our permanent records, our minutes, in a way that they can find it. And so we put it up here. It says, right here, our permanent records, our minutes are in this online library. But that's not the only thing we wanted to store there. We were trying, and this is a work in progress, and we're trying to ultimately have a, an online library for residents to get to even more permanent records, not just minutes, but also ordinances, resolutions. You know, we're starting, we want to build out other things as well of our permanent records so that the public can go in and look themselves and be able to find things if they want them. So that's really sort of been a work in progress. It's something that our office took on, and we took it on because of the input from the public when we did these, this new agenda. So, so it's set out right here now. Let me give you just a bit of a tutorial, but I'm not going to make it too long. I just want you to see that another question was, well, how hard is this thing to use? And I don't know if any of you have used it before, but it's pretty simple. You get in, and you can actually word search, you can phrase search, you can go into, for example, say I want to get information, maybe we'll go into EDC, for example, and we want to find out about bylaws, which you can see I've searched before. So we do a search for just a word, it's going to pop up all the different things. Now, you'll see, I'm searching all of EDC throughout those years, right? And so it's going to pull up all of these things. But say I don't really want that. Maybe I'm like, okay, no, no, I don't need every year. Maybe give me a decade's worth, right? You can do it at a decade, you can search that word, or you can even go into one specific year if you knew the year, and you can look for that word. So you can do word searches, but you can also do phrase searches. So the way you do that, say you want to go into ordinances, for example, and you're looking for, I don't know, I think we, yeah, we did the no parking, that was a thing we were looking for once. And so we do a search for that. It will take a little bit because I'm searching all the ordinances, but say you knew a decade, you could go into that or a year. But as it searches, you can see everything with, if you put it in quotes and you're looking for just a phrase, just stick it in quotes like that and look at, it's going to pull everything. Say, okay, I don't want everything. So we have this in 2020, we have 20, I want the most recent. So you can get into different years and such, even with those types of searches. So that's what we're working on building out for the public. We're trying to make it easier for the public to find our permanent records. But while, when we did that, it made us a little bit different because our minutes were outward-facing to our public in this library. So then we went to our purge, and it was time to purge agendas to our TSLAC guidelines, which is two years. So that's what we started working on, and that's where that came from. So had we not had this outward-facing tool for the public for our minutes, we probably wouldn't have looked at purging just because we don't want to take something from our resi- residents. We want actually them to have more information. So that's kind of where that came from and why we started down this road with the purge now is because we had moved things, we now have this to offer, and that's where this all came from. So again, we follow, I'm going to move over so I can see more, I'm sorry, I'm short over the screen. So we were moving based on what the current codes state and what's been set out by our city. However, if you guys, if there's a change necessary, or if you feel that is necessary, of course, we're going to, you know, I would just follow those codes. What I would suggest is if anything is changed from what's already established in our codes, we change that by ordinance, and we put that in our codes because I have to follow what our city says as far as records retention, if that makes sense. So whatever you guys decide is fine. I just kind of wanted to give y'all a background of what this is all about, what we do have out there to offer, what we are actually building, and we will continue to build for our residents to just make it easier. Also, we welcome any input. My office does. If you have any other ideas for this library, certainly welcome it. But we, again, we're still building it out, and it's just beginning. So that's all I have. Now, I think we do need to touch on another thing that's come up. I'm going to let Gail handle that because I think that's through her side of things. But we do need some guidance on audio/video files as well. That's sort of all interconnected with this.
Right. So on that note, part of the process when we were discussing this agenda item, we realized that the previous council in first establishing the council live streaming, we had a pilot program, policy that was put together. However, we did not address internally what our records retention would be for the video recordings. So we've since talked with our IT department and Michelle, that is working in the soundbox, that's responsible for helping us with all of the AV to put this on. And what we'll need to do is probably get some direction as far as where and how long we are going to keep our live streaming videos. So as Rachel mentioned, the minutes are the final and permanent record per the state law. And per state law, if we were to follow that as far as the video recordings, then after the minutes are approved, 90 days per TSLAC, those could officially go away. And long term, it will be helpful for us to get some direction on what the expectations are of keeping the video, just because some of you are very aware of the size of those files. So right now, we have a multi-terabyte server that we can house those so that those records can be backed up and secure that we have those. Moving into the future, as you can imagine the size of those files, is it going to follow TSLAC? Will it follow six months? Will it follow a year, 10 years, 20 years? That will definitely influence life cycles of our servers. And with each decade, we'll need to get more and more storage. So that is one thing that, with this item, that we have not addressed, and we're still under the pilot program, and we'll need to discuss what council's directions and expectations are of not only the agendas, but how long that they would expect these videos to be accessible as well.
Have we reached out to other cities? I know Lake City does live streaming and other cities that do have their own live streams or their own video recording, reached out to them to kind of see what their policies are and kind of what best practices are for retaining these types of files?
So as Rachel mentioned, it depends on the sophistication of the software that you get. So where you call the depository of your official records is important. We have a number of software systems right now. So when we added the boards and commissions feature, Michelle talked about the Castus software. That's a cloud-based software. So every software that we have is, that's cloud-based. If we're not pulling a copy off of that, then it's in the cloud. So there's a copy that she's keeping right now in-house, and that's where the storage comes in. To our knowledge, and I'll defer to our city attorney on this one, but again, the TSLACs is the governing, so that 90-day post minutes is officially the TSLACs retention schedule. And do you want to speak on that?
No. I know several cities do keep, City of Galveston was an example I used earlier today. They keep videos of their meetings beyond the 90 days. And it gets down to a cost, you know, how much is council willing to pay to store that material and how long the technology continues to exist to retrieve whatever format you save it in. But even, I was looking at City of, after I talked to Sharon earlier, I looked at Galveston's ordinance. They've adopted the standard Local Government Code and retention schedule. So under their official policy, they still have just a 90-day retention period on that, although they keep it on their administratively, they've kept it on their site longer than that. And I think that's pretty much, you know, in looking at some of my other clients, City of Western University and all, most of the cities that I know, I've not done any ordinances of mending the standard retention codes. They may retain some documents longer than that administratively. They may keep some documents, it may take them a while to go through documents. I'll often encourage them to get rid of certain documents, you know, on a regular basis. In part, you know, I think it is important that you keep control of the amount of documents that you have out there because if you get involved in litigation, or if you have open records requests, it gets to be very cumbersome to sometimes retrieve that information. And you can't recover your cost to do that from the people that are requesting the information. So.
Once the agenda, so our agendas have attachments, and then when they become the official, officially recorded minutes and approved minutes, the attachments that are germane to the minutes are also attached to the minutes, or they're somewhere else in the code if they're permanent.
There's some, and agenda packets would be the example. The agenda packets, I think, have a two-year life. If they have attached to them engineering reports, financial reports, those are going to have their own retention schedule. And so they may be, some of those are permanent documents, some of those are five-year documents. They're going to have their own lifecycle, but they won't be in that particular format. You know, the agenda packets themselves will move along, and then you will keep things. As a practical matter, the thing that's important is your minutes. You know, I hear, you know, it's nice for citizens and even for council sometimes to want to know, why did people do something five, 10 years ago? As a practical matter, and I'll say, as a legal matter, it usually does not matter because of what I call the rational basis test. And if you get involved in litigation, it's not really important what any council member said or thought when they adopted whatever policy it was they adopted 10, 15 years ago, four years ago. What's important is, can you articulate now a rational basis for having adopted that policy? If you can, it's going to be a okay policy regardless of what the minutes say. And that is usually a question of law. Some judge is going to make that decision, and judges are usually, they're not going to go through your minutes in any detail. They're going to look at it on a higher level than that. So as a practical matter, the amount of detail that I see in minutes is usually unnecessary. And certainly, the agenda packets and other materials that are presented to back up an item, they become ultimately unnecessary with regard to how the city conducts its business.
So the agenda packet is two years, but if there's like engineering drawings or other things that have its own statute, is the whole packet then archived or just that part?
Just that part of the document, those documents would have to be retained in accordance to their particular schedule.
And then I agree as well, like, you know, if we don't have like a set time limit on any audio/video files, and we just do infinite, then all that's going to end up causing down the road is more and more budget issues of having to keep buying new servers and bigger servers. And then, you know, even holding them, you know, storing things on cloud-based, you know, we found out today, you know, that one of the cloud servers that a lot of companies use went down today and caused a lot of headaches for people that use those platforms as well. So I do think we need to, you know, not just store them infinitely unless we just want to just keep kind of throwing money to the IT department, which, you know, that, to keep new servers.
And I'll give you an example of another kind of indirect cost is, if you get involved in litigation, you'll often get a request for all the minutes that the other cities ever had related to that issue. Well, you're going to end up paying a lawyer, you're going to pay your own staff to find those, and then before they're disclosed to the other side, you're going to pay a lawyer to read them. And ultimately, they're not really important to the litigation. You're just going through the discovery process. They're not going to ultimately be used in the litigation because they are not important. So there are those indirect costs that you can't, you know, it's hard to articulate what they are.
For me, my number one concern about this whole deal is preserving the primary and secondary sources on how a city makes its ultimate decisions. And whether it's minor or major, I think is arbitrary. My, just to put the audio/video source aside for a second, my question is, when it comes to things like budget reports, maps, presentations in a physical or a digital format that's been up in like a PDF or a PowerPoint or a Word doc, is that what's part of this eventual purging process that's not being preserved? Because if that's part of the things that are not being preserved, that's kind of where I'm going to have major concerns on.
Yeah, and your financial documents, some of them are going to be permanent, some of them are going to have a 10-year record, some of them may have a five-year record. Those are all determined, I brought the schedule, I didn't bring the schedule, so your city secretary printed them out for me. You can look at, these are the schedules that apply to and that you have adopted at the municipality. And everything from wastewater permit files, logs, there's a tremendous amount of detail, and they're pretty much uniformly adopted, as far as I can know. They have been uniformly adopted by all the cities. I don't, the cities that I represent do not modify the schedules that are provided by the state. They just follow the state's schedules. The state has regular training programs with regard to how to interpret those schedules, and I'm sure your staff attends some of those. And that's, and the oversight that you get, there is oversight with regard to all of your public information. It's the attorney general, just like the individual indicated earlier. If they're unhappy with the city not providing something to them, they complain to the attorney general, and the attorney general addresses it. So there is oversight to the whole public information process.
Are we meeting state requirements for record retention?
Excuse me?
Are we meeting, is the City of Seabrook meeting the state requirements for record retention?
The ordinance that you have for Seabrook's ordinances right now has adopted this large schedule that you see right now.
Okay, so if you were to go into that schedule, the state's schedule, it's got just about every kind of document you can imagine, and how it must be retained, how long it must be retained, like I think real estate records have to be hard copied. They can't be scanned unless it's changed in the last couple of years.
Yeah.
But that's just an example. But every kind of document, whether it's a budget, whether it's a note, whatever, is identified in that state requirement, and we are meeting that. And unless somebody can come forward with, instead of just an opinion, I'd like to keep him longer, but provide a case as to why a certain document needs to be kept longer and in what manner, whether it's hard copied or scanned or whatever, I think we're there. I think we're meeting the requirements. And I haven't heard anyone that's come forward and said this document is missing because, you know, it's not like they're getting rid of them every other day.
So I'm going to, I'm going to jump in. We keep talking legal, what's legal, TSLAC, their guidelines, that's the minimum. So I want to reiterate that that's not like, that's not to say you must stick with two years. That's the minimum that they require because they feel like it's important to keep that amount of documentation. That shouldn't delimit the importance of maintaining further documentation for the sake of transparency. So I actually looked at the cities surrounding us to see, not necessarily their retention policy, but what their retention examples are. Some of them don't have that policy posted online. So sometimes it's just a retention schedule that they keep. It's not necessarily an ordinance. So LaPorte, the agenda item with all attachments, which I think it binds everything together. So it's important to have all of that together because it's an easier reference point. I've used the library. It's not as simple as it seems because you have to piecemeal when you're looking for information. LaPorte, everything goes back to January of 2019. Deer Park, August of 2013. Webster, January of 2014. Alvin, January of 2017. Lake City, 2010. El Lago, January of 2021. And Kima, February of 2020. These are all the cities surrounding us. So if we're looking to see how other places are doing it, then I think that is a really good place to jump off of. Now, this isn't talking about the video. This is just about the agendas. But I looked at the minutes, and although I agree that, I mean, I can see that it says for, if the minutes for agenda is two years, if the minutes describe each matter considered by the governing body, well, the minutes, it gives a high level, but there's no context. And for someone that's referencing information, context is key. So you can go look at the minute and see, yeah, they talked about this on this day, and they voted this, but you have no idea what the motivation was or what the backstory was. And that's very important, positive and negative, to be able to reference that. So I think maybe 10 years, if we want to put, if we want to put a hard line on it, I would suggest maybe 10 years is our cutoff point.
So is it your opinion that the agenda gives that backstory somehow that the minutes don't?
Correct, because the agenda contains attachments.
Well, the minutes do as well, right?
No.
I looked at a set of minutes this morning that had all the attachments.
I mean, I printed out minutes also, and there's no attachments when you look at the minutes.
We do attach, like, presentation.
Yeah.
Yes, so if we aren't spelling it out in the minutes, say, on a presentation, we will attach, it'll say C attachment A, C attachment B. That's what those are. The things that we aren't putting in the minutes now are ordinances because they're unsigned in a packet, resolutions, you know, things that are going to be elsewhere, budget, you know, things like that, we're not going to put in the minutes because they will be retained elsewhere. So, I mean, just to let you know what types of attachments are going in the minutes. It's those things that aren't fully explained necessarily, but we'd rather you reference, like, the presentations and such.
So it says C attachment, but you have to, you have to request or look for that attachment, or at least in the minutes that I pulled up, it wasn't actually attached. You had to go search or reference that attachment?
No, I think if you'll go ahead, if you want to pull up in the online library, maybe a latest set, you're right, in the agenda, that attachment for the minutes. But when it's actually filed, we do have attachment A, attachment B. So if it's something that's already approved, if we want to take a look, I don't know if it answers fully the question, but if, say, you want to go in 2020, yeah, what we know has been, you can go to one of the more recent or whatever. If it's an attachment, it says C attachment A, if you'll scroll down, yes, see, there's several. see attachment A, if you'll scroll down, pass, yeah, see, there's several pages attached, if it's a presentation or if it's something like that, it will be attached to the minutes. However, no, all attachments are not in the minutes. If it's something that's going to be contained elsewhere, then, I, I hope I'm answering the question.
You are.
So, so let me pose a hypothetical, you go to, not you, somebody goes and they're looking for something, and they, and they go to the agenda for a previous meeting and it has attachments in it, and they make an assumption that whatever was discussed on that agenda item and whatever those attachments refer to were actually decided upon by the governing body, but they weren't. So they would have to know to go to the minutes because that's the official document of what happened in this meeting, for instance, right? So I just think that we should just keep that in mind, that there is some danger there of somebody making an incorrect assumption, and this actually happened last week, about something that was tabled to, and was never re-discussed. So there's just a little bit of danger there, just, I, I'm not opposed to doing this, I'm just, just something to be aware of. Anybody else want to jump in?
On TSLAP, who sets those, like, is that the AG's office that kind of oversee?
No, it's set by the Texas State Library Commission on Library Archives, Texas State Library and Archives Commission. And they publish the rules, as you said, SLRR, they, they do the rules for municipalities, for counties, for all the special districts in the state, junior college districts, library districts, municipality districts. They have a whole schedule, they have different schedules for each of the entities. For municipalities, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, there are eight different schedules that they have that vary in, in length and have retention notes that apply specifically to municipalities, like broken down to your utility department, your police department, your, you know, emergency services. It's broken down by subject area generally. Municipal court, there's a lot of special rules regarding municipal court.
So for purposes of our discussion, are we just talking about city council stuff? Are we talking about all commissions and boards?
Everything.
Everything, I mean, just for purposes of our discussion, just so we can narrow the scope, so to speak. Tyler?
Yeah, a quick suggestion on the AV side of things. So back on one of my old jobs, it was one of my jobs to take all of our service recordings and create a footprint of all that, so people can see those. So I can understand firsthand the task of having to take multiple consistent recordings and having to make sure that it's all in one place, safe and sound. My recommendation is kind of suggests sort of a workflow. I don't know whether about keeping video for longer. Personally, I would love to keep video recordings of all that we do as long as possible. But I know that audio is a considerably smaller file than video, and I might, would like to explore kind of a workflow idea of, for whatever reason, if we cannot keep video of the, say, of the actual meeting, but keep an audio of it with an accompanying transcript. So that way you would have, let's say you have meeting 10 years from now, you have the audio of the file, not the video, but also an accompanying transcript of that audio. So in case anybody wants to go through and analyze word for word what is being said, I don't, you know, there's probably technologies being developed right now that could do that pretty efficiently, that could be proofread, double-checked, I don't know. This is, this is a suggestion. So if we can't have the large file of as many meetings as we want for each one of these things, we can at least have that if somebody wants to go and meticulously look through that whole deal.
And I think that's an excellent suggestion, you know, to, to keep it and to transfer it. My, my only concern with that is, you know, is in that process, we're just putting more task on city staff. And we already have, you know, our media department is already, you know, two people, you know, so, you know, we're just going to be kind of putting more and more, more work on them. And then I feel like, you know, if, to properly do that, you know, we're looking at stuff like down the road of the, probably have to add additional personnel, whether it's part-time, full-time, to be able to help, to help, you know, offset some, some of the workload of the stuff that they already, already have to do. And also have we, like, does IT have any, any feedback, thoughts on, on the, not to, not to put you on, on, on the spot, you know, like, I mean, y'all, you know more about IT than I do. I mean, I just restart everything and sometimes it works. So I didn't know if IT had any, any feedback on, on suggestions of storing data and what, what y'all thoughts on it were.
It all really depends on the size of the videos and files.
Sorry. Video files can, are very large, especially with the advancement of technology and all that. Mick's now filming in 4K, which files can reach easily 10 to 20 gigabytes worth of data. So we definitely would need to upgrade our storage units for sure to do that. And for the PDF files and attachments and all that, I believe we got two terabytes with MCCI for storage capabilities, and each terabyte after that is an additional cost. But I can confirm that with Mick and Rachel tomorrow.
Thank you.
What about, before you go, what about sound files? Because I know we do the video, but we also do a backup audio recording. Like, what's the size differential between an audio file?
Good question. Audio, I'm not positive, because we were discussing more of the video files and PDFs. I can definitely get you the typical size of the WAV files and all that. If, I can email you tomorrow if you want.
Thank you.
I can tell you firsthand that a WAV file is considerably smaller than an MP4 or whatever files, whatever record file that we have for video. And just to add as well with, when it comes to software that we use, and I don't know the specific software we use for how we edit our videos or anything like that. If we use Adobe, for example, I know that in the recent Adobe Max conference, that a lot of our systems are going more towards automation. And so are the types of tedious editing and stuff that I had to do 10, 15 years ago when it came to taking a lot of this stuff is going to be a lot simpler. I don't know how, you know, reliable to a legal standpoint where we have to be absolutely correct with our files and records. But I know the technology is getting closer to that. So eventually, maybe, hopefully, I mean, we're just discussing, you know, that a lot of, hopefully that this stuff is more automated and a workflow type of deal, if we're thinking of it optimistically like I am.
Can we have Mick come down and give her thoughts? Or no? She stood up, so I think she's got something to, oh, here, okay.
You know, one of the things I think we're going to take consideration is the cost, cost of equipment, software and personnel. And yet, and, you know, we're sitting there, is one year enough? Is 10 years too many? And then, you know, are we going to do it forever?
I think that's the direction. When we realized that we had left that pilot program on the table, we really haven't addressed the retention of the files. It's still sort of a young program. And, you know, Mick has done a lot, and she's in the midst of doing the conversion for the boards and commissions with another software. So Mick, I'll let you kind of.
Is that, is that cloud-based, the, the videos right now?
So we're talking about completely different systems. For our records retention, we're talking about our on-premises storage.
Yeah.
That is our entire media library, includes all of our archival historical footage, photos, all of that. I ran down here. In regards of what we currently have, and most likely, I cannot say for other cities, so hopefully I don't put my foot in my mouth, but the, the stuff that is out is most likely not the official records retentions. If it exists on the internet, it's out there. We stream out to YouTube, and as long as YouTube exists and YouTube people that be don't deem something wrong with our video to take it down, it will exist there in perpetuity. We don't delete anything off of YouTube, at least in regards of our council meetings and all of that. This is, this records retention is purely for our onsite, hard, not cloud-based storage, because everything else exists in perpetuity. Does that make sense?
So just to repeat what you said, we have them all on YouTube, we're not planning on taking those down and purging them. All the videos are going to be captured on YouTube unless something happens to YouTube or something changes.
Correct.
But it doesn't take up storage space on our storage server?
Correct, because it's hosted on YouTube. The issue is, is we don't own the footage on YouTube, so they have the right to take it down.
Got it.
We have to be able to own and control it for official records.
Do we have physical video and audio files of our recordings before we upload them? And do we keep those files?
Yes.
Okay.
They're currently located on a server that is, how many, we said it had about two terabytes left of space?
All the video files right now are on a nine-terabyte network storage unit, and right now it is down to two terabytes free space on it. So the more videos she's recording and keeping for historical purposes and retention, it's going to eat up that space relatively fast.
How old is that server? How old is that server?
Two, two years old.
The, the nine-terabyte as a whole is older than the six years I've been here.
No.
With the NAS?
No.
Okay.
Because I put it in.
Okay.
And I've only been here five years.
Okay, we're, we're talking geek.
It's about three years old.
It's about three years old and where, where we've already used almost all but two terabytes. So if we can, so basically like, if we continue to store things on there, it's just going to be like, you know, a perpetual budget increases, a perpetual more, more servers down the road, and then you have to deal with the backups and all that.
And this NAS is not expandable. So we have to physically get a whole new NAS unit that is expandable in the future.
And then what happens in like three years? Would the, the company say, oh, hey, this, your server is now obsolete, you can't service it anymore, we would then need to work on transferring all that data onto a new server?
Correct.
And it's just, it's one of those things where, you know, a small little, you know, issue becomes much more down the road if we don't kind of put, have like a hard, fast, right?
So this is maybe a Gail legal, or a legal question. PEG funds, they're used for capital for setting up video equipment and stuff. Can that also apply towards like a server or some type of storage?
What kind of funds?
PEG funds.
PEG funds, no, not unless it relates to your community service, your, your broadcasting.
Right, broadcasting. So if they were, if, if PEG funds were used for a separate server or some type of store?
For a separate service for your public, for, for video programming to be, to place on your, your community TV, yes. But you can, I don't think you could justify all your municipal records, like your agenda packet.
Okay. I think, I knew it was a stretch, I just had to ask.
The, we are looking, as one of the things that I am looking at is using PEG funds for a video server and including an aspect of a server specifically for video records retentions of boards, committees, commissions, meetings, and however that records retention policy falls. So I am looking at a specific server for.
As long as you were using that as for active programming, I think that would qualify.
Okay, so it, there is a loophole.
It's just for the video, just for the on-premise storage recording of these meetings, because they go out on the PEG channel.
Right, right. And then, like, so there would be, like, but it's retained, right?
Currently, if, based off of whatever is established, TSLAP is the 90 days after adoption of minutes.
Have we already purchased that server, like, per, so we could aim high, like contingent on the amount of videos we decide to retain, right? Like, I mean, because PEG funds, if you don't spend them, they're just sitting in perpetuity because they're only for that purpose, so.
And again, the direction is kind of what Councilor says. I think creating that length of time is important. We just did a roundtable exercise today, and I think if, you know, looking in the future, with the cost escalation of servers, and we could be looking at 40,000 pretty quickly. And their lifecycle is about, you said six to seven years, and a good, and a good one if they don't crash. So it would just be a repetitive investment of, you know, 40,000 in today's dollars, and then in seven years, whatever those dollars are, so.
So we're, we're talking about two different things within the retention. One is the video, right, and one is the written?
Correct.
Documents.
But it seemed like the, the video was the bigger server impact, so that's kind of why I threw that question out. I would want to see some data, maybe like, you know, how much a video stores, like what six months' storage would look like versus a year, like, can we, can we get that data before making that decision?
It would depend on the size of the meeting, the length of the meetings too, right? So a two-hour meeting versus a thirty-minute meeting.
Just an average?
Average.
Yeah, an average.
And I believe I started pulling some of that information during the pilot program, so I can look at, address and see about that in a, updating in an email.
Awesome.
So the shorter the meetings, the shorter the files.
That's what I was.
Yes.
Exactly right.
So, just so we're, we're clear.
Yeah, just, that's right.
That is correct.
Tom, you have to say anything, you have anything to add?
On that note.
Summer, you have anything else? All right, so we need to give some direction to staff. Are we considering as a body, adjusting the TSLAP requirements, increasing those requirements? Let's talk about the printed material. Can we just at least get, we're not going to take a vote, but we get a consensus? Is that what we want to do and for how long?
Or not? Or leave it like it is, or?
I just think going forward, if we're going to retain records longer than the state is requiring them, we need to figure out what it's going to call, what records we're going to keep, and what manner we're going to keep them, and what the cost is going to be, not just in terms of material and equipment, but also in terms of personnel. And then we can make a rational decision on this. But also, how long?
My question for you, Rachel, is the archived agendas, I know you were showing the library and everything, those are going to stay in their current location, right? Or is the plan to migrate those as well somehow?
Well, those were actually going to be purged, but right now they're just, we're waiting to see what y'all.
But the, the two-year, the ones that weren't going to be purged, like the, if, say, you stick with the TSLAP two-year, those are housed in the same location they currently are?
They're going to be housed up until, it'll eventually be just in that new system. So our new system.
Just the two years.
Yeah, two years. Right now it's showing the two years in two systems, but it'll go to the two years just in our new, our, the one we use now.
And then they won't exist, prior to that just won't exist, is that correct?
Correct.
Purge means deleted, in Cleveland's terms.
That's what purge means, yeah, the agenda part, so.
I feel like right now we don't really have enough information to truly make an informed decision on this.
This is pretty complicated.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think there's, we have too many what-if scenarios, too, too many outliers of, you know, to really be able to make an educated and informed decision on this. So I would.
Can we temporarily pause any purging or whatever, like, like you've done now, paused? Okay. And then can we give, can we get city staff to give us, as Buddy suggested, just some number that we could be looking at, maybe the peer, or, you know, for instance, or, okay, I said that, yeah. But, I mean, if it's $50,000 or if it's $500,000, I mean, that's, that's going to make a decision, right? And so we're not, that's all, that's all we got for tonight, anybody else? Is that satisfactory to everybody here?
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna hold off on eliminating anything until the decision's made.
Come back with some, yeah, some additional information that we can make a logical decision. Come back with some, yeah, some additional information that we can make a logical decision. Okay, thank you. All right, item nine, routine business, item 9.1, establish future meeting dates and agenda items.
Mayor and Council, your next regular meeting is December 2nd at 6:00, and as a reminder, there is no second meeting, as you guys established, in the month of December, so that will be your only one.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, okay, thank you, and then there is the ribbon cutting at Soul Creek on Thursday at 2 o'clock, just a reminder, and there being no further business, we will adjourn at 7:46. Thank you all for being here.
He's going to need some signatures.